This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools, and a non-voting ex-officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the wall?
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. Schluessner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Chair Workman?
Here.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda. Mr. Munoz, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
All of approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Announcements and communications, 3.01, recognitions, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I would like to call Cory, the Executive Director and Program Director, Southeast Minnesota Youth Orchestra, and Amanda, Century High School Musical Teacher, up front, and going to talk about this award. You can either stand or sit, either one, whatever you prefer.
Thank you for letting us present this award tonight. My name is Cory Hanky, and I'm the Executive Director of Southeastern Minnesota Youth Orchestras. SEMEO is an organization dedicated to the artistic and personal development of young musicians. Our organization serves students grades three through 12 from throughout southeastern Minnesota and beyond. We offer students a unique opportunity to play in a symphony orchestra that combines both band and orchestra instruments. When I began working for SEMEO in 2015, I felt it was important for our organization to advocate for, on behalf of music education, and partner with both private and public music school teachers throughout southeastern Minnesota. Music programs in our public schools are vital to the development of our youth because it teaches collaboration, discipline, and the ability to perform under pressure. Not all kids can excel at sports or enjoy popularity amongst their peers. So many programs, like the band program at Century High School, for example, provide an opportunity for students to belong and be a part of something special. I know this because I was once an awkward teenager who found self-confidence and self-worth through success in music. To further this aim, SEMEO in 2016 created the Breviro Award for Inspiring Student Excellence Through Music Education. The inaugural award was presented last year to Lori Ringen, the Orchestra Director at Fridell Middle School. This year, we are pleased to present this award to Amanda Kouse, the Band Director at Century High School. Ms. Kouse was nominated by her students and peers, and in the interest of time, I'd like to share just one quote, which I think sums up many of the nominations we received for Ms. Kouse, and this is from a parent. He writes, "Ms. Kouse is an extremely positive influence on students in her Century High Band. Her dedication and desire for excellence is evidenced by the level of achievement in her students. Her students respect her and love her and always do their best for her. Ms. Kouse's students love playing for her in any capacity, marching band, pep band, smaller performances, and for each semester's concerts. She had a large impact on my daughter's life, and I think she is deserving of this award." So I don't, uh, tonight, I don't have an actual award to give Amanda. We're actually going to be presenting the award at SEMEO's annual, its instrumental gala, which is a celebration of music education, and it features live music performed by students and professional musicians. So we'll get to award this again to Ms. Kouse on Friday, and for now, I'm happy to congratulate her on receiving this very well-deserved honor.
Thank you for having us here this evening. It really is my pleasure to work with the students at Century High School and their parents. In fact, I'll be back at a later born meeting this year with some of our students for an honor they've received this fall. But again, it's a pleasure to work at Century High School and have the support of the administration in the building, and I'm actually headed off to pep band with the students for a soccer game now the rain has held, so enjoy your meeting.
Next up, we have a national champion in the house again. At this time, I'm going to have Coach Tony come up and talk about the BPDA National High School Computer Competition.
Thank you for the invite here. I'm gonna call one of our students that's now at the University of Minnesota, but he did want to be a part and listen in, so I will just put him on in listening mode here, and then ask the students to come forward, please. Four of the five, just can just have a seat there.
Right.
And, uh, and later on, we'll let them do some introductions of themselves, and let me just see if Tristan is here.
So, Lori, wait, can we ask some programming questions?
No. Surrounded by a bunch of professional musicians.
Okay, I'll put you on speaker. Okay, so Tristan, you can just listen in for now, but, um...
Sorry, can you repeat that?
He does have jokes, you know.
Hi, Tristan.
Okay, cool. Okay, can he really not hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, all right. So, I'm gonna be speaking over the mic, so I think if I put the phone down, you can hear me, okay? All right. So, again, thank you guys for having us here today. It is a pleasure to be able to come and share with you on the success of the students. These are your students in the district, our students in the program, so it's a great opportunity to share what they've been doing this year, and then to come out of a high school competition with the first place win is even sweeter. So before, I allowed them to be so excited to introduce themselves and kind of give you a little bit spill about what that competition entail, and then what they had to go to to actually get there. So let me just give you a little history about the organization in terms of how it got started, um, in Rochester. So it's Black Data Process Associates. It's a national organization, and a chapter got established in Rochester in 1999. And so I think after the first year, the team kind of prepared and went for a competition the first year, and I think they really found out what was needed in order to compete. But after that, you know, the teams have successfully placed between first, second, and third place for the last, what's with that, 17 years or so. And so some founders were Betty Hutchins, she's here today, and David Times, Frances Anning. I didn't know all the names. It was pre-Mayor Time before I got engaged in it, but it has been a great program in terms of what it offered the students. All right. Okay, thank you. So it's a lot of words on this chart, so I won't go through it all, but let me just summarize what the program is all about and what are we teaching. So it is a program for seventh through 12th graders. We have had as young as fifth graders because the students was determined, and they promised me that they could make it and do it, and I think you were one of those students, and said, "Okay, Ms. Tony, you know, if you let me go, I would do my best." And so there've been a few students that we allow to come early in terms of age, but it's a good time even fifth or sixth graders to engage because it allows them to kind of see what it takes to kind of understand the technology that we are teaching, and we're teaching web development. So basically, application that you use today, like maybe going to Amazon and ordering products, they're learning how to build those types of applications. And so this summer, their project was to build an application, a web-based application, to find a vehicle that you want to purchase, take out a loan, and then determine appreciation value over time. And so there were four, I think 14 other teams that came to compete. It was held in Cincinnati, Ohio, and our team prevailed. Yay! So, and also with the program, we have established the ability to get high school credit. So the students that successfully complete, they get a half credit in high school. So we have a pretty well-defined curriculum. Every time they do a new topic or subject matter, we test, do quizzes. We have a student management system that we keep all that information, so we have the validation and records to turn in, in order for them to get credit there. So that's been a great partnership with the school district, and we also have gotten students that are in like the Catholic school or other peripheral schools that also have gained credit through this program. So our partners and sponsors have been Mayo Clinic, the school district, they provide us the space, have always provided the space over the years, and so this have been a great savings in terms of cost to find a place to meet every Saturday. So we actually meet Saturday mornings from 9:30 to 12:30. So the students are motivated to get up on the Saturday mornings and come learn. And then IBM, over the years, have been equipment and also community grants that we've gotten there, and many other local businesses also contribute and provide funding to help us operate. And the main spend, I would say, is really the competition, the trip to the competition, and they're held in different places every year. So next year will be in New Orleans, so I think that will be a fun trip. Just gave you a little bit of demographics here, I won't go into it, so, but last year, our enrollment was 71 students in the program that comes, but this is our demographics, if you want to just kind of take a quick glance at the student makeup and that. So we got students from all backgrounds, and that's the beauty of the program, is allow anyone interested to attend and to perform, and so that's have been really good over the years. And we're at an advantage here in Rochester, and it is because we can get to places in 10, 15 minutes. And when you have teams that are in metropolitan area, I mean, it'll take an hour commute or something ridiculous, so it's harder for them to meet. So it's a sweet spot, and we're able to get the students, and we're able to meet on a regular basis to, in order to teach the topics necessary, in order to be ready to compete. We had a picture here of these beautiful students, and I think I'm gonna, at this point, allow you guys to kind of share about the program, and then I have a few closing charts. So Tristan, do you want to go first? Let me see if I lost it. I did, someone was calling me, actually. So go ahead. Kyle, you want to start?
Uh-uh, I'm fine.
All right, Tiara, start it up, and then he'll be warmed up by the time we get there.
All right, I'm Tiara Felder, I'm a freshman at Century High School.
I'll let you do introduction.
Um, let's see, so one thing I always love talking about, and these guys know it, those guys know it, I always love talking about, not as much as competition, but being with these guys, spending that time in Cincinnati with them, how, no matter how stressed we got, how hard the competition was, how much we worked together, we'd always go out and eat, like eat out with each other, we'd always go to dinner, and we'd always make each other laugh, and we had just such a fun, great time going out of state and going to a different city that I know I won't be able to get that kind of thing again. And being with these guys has been absolutely, like, one of the greatest experiences I will ever have.
I'm Angelie Donthy, I'm a freshman at Century High School. One thing I liked about the trip was meeting new people from different teams, because we got to meet people from so many different states, and it was a new experience.
I'm Veda Somashaker, I'm also a ninth grader at Century High School. I think just the experience overall was very interesting to me. Last year, I was part of the YCTP, which is another training program that was incorporated with BDPA. This year, being on the competition team was definitely different, and it was a bit stressful. We trained really hard during the summer, so I think at the end of the competition, our results really showed.
Well, I'm Kyle Crook, and I'm a freshman in Mayo, and I think one of the things I liked most about this trip was the ability to find like hundreds of people who have the same interests of you, and just connect and make friendships between them all. And I really like this team, too, great people.
So Tristan, you want to do an introduction here? So this is Tristan.
Sure.
He's a student studying architecture.
Can everyone hear me all right? Okay, good, yeah, I just want to make sure we don't have such good connection over here. But as Miss Tony said, my name's Tristan Trail, I'm a freshman at the University of Minnesota, studying architecture right now. I was a project manager this past year for the team. I've been on, well, I've been in this BDPA organization for six years now, and hopefully I will come back and help out as like an assistant or a teacher myself. But I'd say one of the biggest things that I enjoyed over this past competition was the competition itself, because I don't think I've ever experienced something of the sort like that. Like, you know, you have sports and whatnot, and they're all very high-level stress, but I don't think I've experienced something like the competition that was at Cincinnati this year. It was a level of stress that was so much higher than anything I faced, but it was also very enjoyable, so.
Okay, thank you. And would you guys share kind of your role that you played in the competition in terms of what you were supposed to perform quickly?
Oh, I was the backend.
I was the frontend. I did most of the designing portion of the website.
I was the technical architect. I made sure all the requirements worked, and if it didn't, I would tell them, and I'd help them fix it.
I was also one of the frontend developers with VEDA.
And Tristan also did some front-end architectural design of the application, because we have to do a lot of consideration, you know, look and feel, functionality, and some base requirements we had to always meet as we competed. So they talked about this summer, so once the team is identified, once the team is identified, and it's based off of really the top-scoring kids in the class, so they can kind of see their progress from week to week to week, and whoever rides to the top, that's the team. So it's not subject to us, who we think, but it's based on their performance. And so after we finish the program, they go into boot camp, and so they'll meet every day, start out maybe four hours a day and work their way up to eight hours, because competition is an eight-hour competition, and so you need to be able to get a project, be able to work it in eight hours. Many times, you won't complete it, and that's the intent, right? But to be able to fulfill the base requirement in order to get rated and graded, and you have to present it, you know, to judges, and so the boot camp is stressful. You're working through schedules, you're working through keeping everyone motivated within the team, but they kind of work that themselves, and that's how they build the synergy among the team and figure out who's best at what. And as the coaches, and Gord is really the technical leader of the program, and so we allow them to kind of figure out that synergy and that jail and what the role they're gonna play, and then we make sure that they stay on track with what the outcome is. So again, our registration is this weekend, and if you want to share that information to other folks, that'd be great. It's at Century High School from 10 to noon at the main entrance, again, seventh through 12th grade, and then we also allow sixth graders and some motivated fifth graders if we have room. And we will start class on October 14th. So it is early this year because there's a lot of new requirements, and we want to make sure that we prepare the students in order to be competitive. And so the last thing here that we have on here is, who can we talk to in your IT in the lab that will allow us to kind of share some of the new requirements in terms of the technology that we're moving toward? And so if I could reach out to you, Wendy, maybe you can give me a contact of who that would be. Gord, I did all the talking, but...
I know, that's okay. But I'll add to that, you did a fantastic job. I'll just add to that, the difficulties that we're facing is to come up with 78 computers and have them all in one spot with the technologies that we can teach them on. So to some degree, we can do some of that on the web server, but there are some IDEs that you cannot run off of a web server. So you have to have actual desktops, that's what programmers use worldwide, so we need to have some pieces of the technology on the local hard disk so that they can launch it, run their application, compile it, and be done within a reasonable amount of time. Doing it on the web is going to be slower than snails. So for that, we've got quite a few different pieces. That's the requirements at the national now, to teach with actual IDEs. So, yeah, if we can, I can, all the sources of material is absolutely free. It's open source, there's enough, there's no cost, other than the fact that we just need to install it and occasional update, so.
Thank you, Mike Johnson, we need to help you out.
Okay, awesome.
Fantastic, thank you.
So again, thank you guys for the time, we really appreciate it, and Dunbarlow kind of brought it up, so it'd be great to kind of share with the board the accomplishment, and I thought that was truly a great opportunity for the students. These are your students in your district that are achieving some great things, and so I think it's for us as leaders and teachers to share this outcome with you guys. So thank you very much.
Before you go, this is open to all students, not just those enrolled in Rochester Public Schools, but do you have to have a certain GPA, or how does one apply?
Motivation.
Just the motivation.
Just interest. Sometimes parents create the interest with the kids, and they come every week. They do come every week, and some of the kids, you know, is like, okay, we receive you, we know that you are hereby forced, but it's okay. And sometime it turns around, the kids, you know, after the first year, second year, they love it, you know, but sometime it is parents motivating. But it has been truly a blessing and opportunity to be one of the leaders and to have shared that. Now, Mrs. Smith is here, and he kind of started out providing us the boot camp space, in the incubator space at the Mayo Building downtown, so we really appreciate his partnership there, too.
I just got to say that, you know, it's an amazing group of people, but really, the time that you adults put in to make this work, you know, it wouldn't work without you guys, and you guys, and I know you've been doing this for years, I mean, this is like a lifetime commitment, I guess, but, you know, I'm sure you get a lot of rewards seeing the accomplishment of these kids, because, you know, this isn't, this is really a big deal, I mean, you guys built a dynasty.
Absolutely.
You just built a dynasty. How many national champions, like 12 or 15 national champions, something like that?
Yeah, lost track.
I mean, you guys go out there... I know I was down there at Accelerator when they were training, I think it was you was sitting, and I came in, and you probably thought, "Who's this old man coming around asking?" I said, "And I said, and I asked, remember I asked you, remember I asked you? Remember what I asked you?"
I think you were just asking me like what we were doing.
Yeah, I asked you that, but I asked you, "Are you gonna win?"
Oh, yeah.
I said, "Yeah," I told you, I asked you, "You gonna win?" You said, "I don't know." They're a humble group of kids, because they know. They know, it's hard, because, you know, they gotta make the front end and the back end of this stuff work. This isn't just like, you know, something to look up on and punch a button and stuff actually function, so it's an amazing group of kids, amazing group of parents and adults that make this thing happen, and, you know, you don't get enough attention for what you're doing, because it's a big deal. It really is.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I'm gonna have Jared come up, and I'll have him introduce the other members of his team, but if you recall, a while back, towards the end of last school year, we brought to the board permission to do the start of school a little bit differently. They received a grant to try this, and so tonight, they're going to share the results that they got from that experience, so I'll turn it over to Jared.
Good evening, Superintendent Munoz, Chair Workman, and members of the school board. Thank you for allowing us to share our exciting start to the school year with you. Thank you, Wendy, as well, for getting them ready. With me today, I have Jane Williams, who's a third-grade teacher at Bishop, and Stephanie Gittinger, who is a parent. She's our PTSA president, and she's going to represent our parent perspective as well as we share Step Into Learning with you. So I'm going to kind of start just talking about the why and the what, and then we're going to dig into how did it go from there. So leading with the why is always important when we're looking at doing something new. There has to be some reasons to do this, and really putting those reasons out there for our families was essential to the success of this. So in front of you, you have the whys as well, I don't have to read them all to you, but really, the whys allowed us as staff, as well as families, to meet individually in a format that's a little bit different than what you might picture a traditional meet-the-teacher-to-look-like, where it's an open house for a couple hours where everyone's just coming in. It also expanded opportunities for students and families to connect with the different resources that we have at school. We had more availability for some of our nursing staff, for some of our community partners, as well as for other places that are connected to the Bishop community. It also allowed that smooth transition for our students coming into the classroom, that one-on-one piece where the student could really get settled into the classroom, get a feel for this is what my classroom looks like, and just get connected into their classroom. We did assess each student in their reading through our Action 100 Reading Program to receive their beginning-of-the-year level, which then allows our teaching staff to start with students right away, to meet their needs more individually right away. And we also allowed more time to fill out some of those beginning-of-the-year paperwork, but we also did our vision screening, we had assessments that were done, pictures that were done. A lot of those beginning-of-the-year things could all be taken care of on one day, so that way, it's not taking away from instructional time once the year gets going. So logistically, kind of what happened, there was a group of staff led by Jane that wrote an RPS Innovates grant during the first year that RPS Innovates was around. That's a way for staff to throw, here's new ideas that we have that we'd like to try. And that grant was funded during the 15, 16 school year, which then stepped, kind of put into motion the planning for this and the research, and the research. The committee worked for two years, working to research what this would look like, visiting other districts around us that have similar starts to their school year, talking to those people involved, as well as just reading and digging into, so what could this really look like here at Bishop? The committee included Jane Williams, Tessa Weiss, Linda Graves, Tracy McGuire, Karen Van Voren, Kate Palmquist, and myself. So logistically, then, we had, our first two days of school looked a little bit different than the rest of Rochester Public Schools, but on September 5th, we had from 8 till 7, families set up conference time or individual appointments, and on September 6th, from 8 to 3:30. So we didn't have all the students in our building on those two days, like the rest of our first through fifth grade counterparts did. Families set up a 30-minute appointment, and we used our Skyward system to do a conference scheduler so families could find times that worked for them. The teachers and the families met, the teacher individually then met with the student to complete that assessment and just like get-to-know-you sort of piece, which was a huge part of this, and the families filling out all the necessary paperwork. Again, vision checks, meeting with the nurse, PTSA, school pictures, all those resources were available. We also want to make sure that all of our families could access this day, so we pre-scheduled our bilingual conferences ahead of time to make sure that we had the necessary resources there. We emailed and hard copy mailed all of our families, and... We emailed and hard copy mailed all of our families, and then if we didn't hear back from families, we reached out and gave a personal phone call to them to help them get set up as well. So how did it go? You can see some pictures of the day, just some of those individual conferences happening, the families coming in, different resources that were available to greet the families. I'm going to talk a little bit about attendance. When we first looked at how many families showed up or how many students showed up to this, eighteen out of our five hundred and three students did not attend. So we had ninety-six point four percent of our students that did attend. When we did a little bit more digging, we found out that eight of those students moved from Bishop, so really, our attendance was ninety-eight percent. On a given year, it's usually about twenty-five to thirty students that don't show up, so it's probably more around that ninety-five percent. So we did see increased attendance from this more personal connection. And Jane's going to talk a little bit more about her results.
Well, we had a staff survey. So at the end of our step into learning, we had designed two surveys, one for our staff and then one for our parents to take. And the staff, as you can kind of see the results, having time at the beginning of the year to meet with a parent and meet with children is just phenomenal. And being able to have a parent come up to you and say, I need to talk to you about some things, but they're kind of personal, I didn't want to write them down, and being able to have that ability to have that quiet time with them was just invaluable. And I think when we took a look at our staff results, eighty-nine point two percent strongly agreed that this was a wonderful way to start and have that interaction time with parents. And ten point eight said, yes, I think it is. So that's a hundred percent of our staff that was on the positive side of that. And the same with having our reading level instruction done. Our reading teacher had ninety-eight percent of her reading data by the end of the first week of school. And for me, what that meant was, I had to hit the ground running on day three of school. And so I was not struggling trying to get twenty-eight individual reading assessments done in a matter of a month and a half of school, which sounds like that's a lot of time. But you also have twenty-seven other children that you're trying to balance as you're moving this around. So having all of those things in place and being able to start that reading instruction immediately was something that was just absolutely phenomenal. There we go. As far as would we like to see it continue at Bishop? Absolutely. Do you see Step Into Learning as something that might be replicated throughout the district? That was a question that Brandon McGruffick said, I think you should put that on there. And so we sent that out to both our staff and to our parents. And our staff felt like, yes, this is something that you could replicate throughout the district. Some of the anecdotal notes that came in, connecting one-to-one with parents was a gift, a great opportunity for Bishop, and was beneficial to all staff and to our students. I think it was a great value. We need to be more attentive to the students. One of the reasons this grant came about was actually from parents. When we would have meet the teacher day, and we would have an hour and a half of crammed, you know, everybody in, everybody out, and you shake a hand, and when the time comes, you turn around, you go, did that child have blonde hair or was he brown-haired? Which one is this one? Because they're all there all at once, and you're trying to keep everything straight as they're coming through. And having this opportunity to meet them one-on-one was fantastic. Having our parents say, I couldn't get in to see the nurse that day, can you just send my meds? Here's the bag. And the kid's coming in with it, and you're like, no, it doesn't work this way. And so having the nurse being able to be right there was fantastic. Having all of our staff right there was wonderful. Our parents could get right to the nutritionist, they could get right to the nurse, they could get right to the vision and hearing, they could ask the questions that they wanted to. And they made a lot of connections. I think the biggest thing that I heard was from our special ed and support staff, who on those days of meet the teacher, sit in their room all by themselves. And if someone drops by, they'll see them. And if they don't, they don't. But we got an hour and a half. And on this particular day, we had a little check sheet where the parents would come in, and they would say, okay, first, we have to do this, and then we have to do this, and then we have to do this. And so there was a little place for them to go. And our special ed teachers had went through all of those papers, and they had said, and stop and see me, to these children. And so as these children on IEPs would come through, they would stop and see them. And so they had a chance to talk about their IEPs and their child's special needs at the same time. And our EL teachers' room was packed full. And we had people there with the interpreters and asking about busing and asking about, you know, how do I start the year, and where do my kids cross the road? And these questions that they could get answers to, and they had the access to do that. So that was phenomenal. The last one here is, this is the best start to the school year ever. Actually, I learned something during our teacher work week because I wasn't stressed with meet the teacher. That was another thing, too, when we have our staff development days at the beginning of the year. We have one week of coming back to school. And elementary and middle school and high school, we all have our specific needs in the buildings. And elementary, you probably hear us people hollering all the time, just one more day in our rooms, just one more day in our rooms. And the reason being is when you have your little ones coming, the teachers aren't really, or the parents aren't really looking just at, are you a competent teacher? Hopefully, you know, you hired us, you think we're competent to be there. But they're also looking at that classroom, and they're like, is this warm? Is this an inviting room? Do you have a science center? Where are you reading books? And so for an elementary teacher, we have to pack up everything at the end of the year, and we have to unpack everything and make that room look like a family, like a home, like a place to be. And so having one and a half days to do that is pretty tight on a schedule. And so when we took our time to do this, we had our Monday where we got our time in our room. Tuesday and Wednesday, we were not even in our building, we were at full-time staff development day with the district. Thursday, when our counterparts were sitting there with their knees shaking, going, today is meet the teacher day, and we were talking about, you know, the staff development, they're like, I don't even know what they were talking about. I was making notes of what I had to do. And for Bishop, we actually sat at our staff development workshops for all of Tuesday and all of Wednesday, and we were not panicking about Thursday. And we all learned something. And so that was just a wonderful treat to be able to be relaxed and be able to take in that information. So that was another plus that we didn't even think of was going to happen. The stress was taken off, and we could learn. And then Thursday came and Friday came, and we were getting all ready for our parents to come in, doing our phone calls, making sure everybody was there. And then on Tuesday, we started in, and we went from eight in the morning till seven o'clock at night. And then Wednesday, we were there for the entire full day as well. And Thursday, we hit the ground running teaching. So it was a fantastic experience on our part.
I think that means it's me. And Jane, now you gave me some questions I'll ask the teacher next year at meet the teacher. And so as a parent, I also completed the survey. And you can see from the data shown on this graph that I'm going to have a hard time seeing what's the amount back. Here it says, did Bishop Elementary staff provide us with enough information to understand what Step Into Learning was on the fifth and sixth? And you can see over ninety percent and probably close to ninety-five percent of our parents agreed to that question. And I know from my perspective, I remember getting information, probably, I can't remember if it was even in April and May, when it had been initially approved, to start thinking about, you know, the fall time. And this is, you know, we're going to pilot this for the school district. And so it started to get me thinking about, how am I going to start planning for those two days where my children don't have daycare? Because I have two kids at Bishop right now. And so those were some of the questions that I had initially going on. There's also a couple of different questions that we had had in here. Thank you, Jared. About, I believe the start allowed my child individual time to meet and have a positive interaction with his or her teacher. A total of ninety-six percent either strongly agreed or agreed to that statement. Having my child's reading assessed before the start of school will be beneficial in meeting the reading goals. We had ninety-two percent agree or strongly agree to that statement. And then I believe this is a good way of starting this school year. Again, we had over ninety, or we had ninety-four percent of our parents that participated in the survey feel that that was an accurate statement. So very similar to some of the teacher questions, we also had, would you like to see this Step Into Learning continue? And this is at, you know, Bishop. And we had almost ninety-four percent of our respondents of the survey indicate yes, that they'd like to see this continue. Recommending that the program be replicated across the district. Here we had ninety-two percent support or agree with that statement and wanting to see it throughout the community or throughout the district. Some of the anecdotal responses that we got, it was awesome, and I loved it. Again, keeping in mind, these are parents, right? So maybe not so much the students all the time, but I loved the one-on-one time. So again, we had the opportunity for the families and the students to be with the teacher for that thirty-minute time block. Again, enjoy being able to meet the kid's teacher in that one-on-one setting. Some areas of growth and future considerations. So we know no change is perfect, right? So some of the opportunities that we see are we mail all of the paperwork ahead of time. So when we got to the school and started meeting individually with our teachers or as families, we met with them for a couple of minutes as a family or as, you know, with the student, talked about the questions that we might have with regards to the classroom and understanding and learning a little bit more about the teacher. But then afterwards, it was, okay, now, your paperwork that you need to complete is in the hallway, can you go do that and complete that while you're waiting for your child to be done? So with having two kids, I strategically scheduled, you know, the appointments so that they were, you know, in half-hour blocks back to back. So if I was done with one, you know, finished the paperwork and gone off to the second one, and I could have probably left then for that evening or that afternoon that I was there. But being able to complete all of that paperwork ahead of time would help. Offering some sort of SAC programming, you know, or some type of opportunity for parents to take their children somewhere so that they have the ability to attend. Now, we didn't see a significant issue with that, you know, with regards to, you know, only eight students not being there, maybe close to ten. People make it work. But if there's a way that we can make it a little bit easier for individuals and families to do that. And again, tell parents to plan for more time. I didn't have enough time to take off, we had to meet with multiple people outside the conference time. So again, you know, if you're there for the half hour, and part of it was picture-taking as well, so the students had the ability to get their pictures taken. So it's one less day again for them to worry about getting the kids into that environment. But just having the parents enough time to say, okay, you know, if you do have some special needs, or if there are other things that you need to consider, you do need to plan for maybe an additional time other than the half hour that was allotted. I think I've kind of shared my perspective throughout the session, but I, you know, again, nothing for the first time is perfect. And I will share, you know, and I did with the team, too, that at first I was a little apprehensive, I was like, uh, what am I going to do for two more days? You know, I've got to figure out the daycare and the scheduling. But in the end, when you sat back and really started to think about it and, you know, get rid of that reactive, it's all about enhancing my child's education. And if this is an opportunity for my teachers to meet one-on-one with my children, and me as a family, you know, as a parent, talking about those issues that maybe I'm not comfortable writing down, or I'm not comfortable with ten other people sitting in the room waiting to talk to the teacher because they are more, you know, confidential or sensitive, to me, it's enhancing my child's education, and it was important for me as a parent and my spouse as well for our children's success in the long term.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share a little bit about our beginning of the year.
I think this is really an important thing for parents and teachers to be able to have a face-to-face meeting, and they're not there because there's a problem. But everything is positive. Kids may be looking forward to the start of school, and our parents certainly are. But what a wonderful way to start off that parent-child-teacher relationship. I think it's great. And just watching you guys sit here and how, you know, happy faces, it's just, it sounds like it was extremely successful, and are we going to try to replicate it someplace? You may decline...
Well, we saw a lot of your shining faces as well that day, so it was nice to see you.
Yes, Mr. Barlow.
Great job. Is it the Bishop Bulldogs?
Yes.
Okay, way to go. And Chair Workman raised one of the questions I would have in terms of replication. This was driven based on a grant. So what are the actual costs that you perhaps incurred or you envisioned the district potentially needing to consider?
So the RPS Innovates grant really paid for the work for this team to plan, study, and to get it off and running. But once we actually implemented it, there was no additional cost for us. So by running it on those first two days of school, when all of our staff are already, all of our employees are already at work, there was no additional cost. It was just how our days looked on those first two days of school. They looked a little bit differently.
And then, final question. Having had the reading assessments occur prior to left me wondering, what has been, what's the historic start point of that? How many days into the school year is it usually before those things occur?
Well, I think teachers are typically, you know, starting to assess and level their students, you know, as soon as they can. But doing an individual assessment with a student can take a while. So kind of as Jane was alluding to, if I'm trying to keep the rest of my students going as well as assessing students, it can take, you know, up to a few weeks to get students individually assessed, you know, with our, you know, those individual conferences are so beneficial. But if we rush them just to get the students assessed, we're really missing out on the benefits of really getting to know the kids as readers. So, you know, by having, you know, ninety-eight percent of our kids assessed, jumping into, for us, day one of school, that just allows us to start meeting individual kids' needs sooner. It doesn't mean that we're not starting reading until, you know, we're starting reading right away. But to be able to know our kids as readers, we just know, we have that information so much quicker now.
And might I add, too, just with, you know, our fall conferences coming up, it's now an opportunity for us to say, how are the children progressing with their reading versus what reading level are they at? Because if they're not progressing, then we have, you know, some opportunities right away.
Ms. Marvin?
Two questions. First one is, when the kids are there with their parents, does the classroom teacher do the reading assessment at that time, or do they go someplace else to get?
We had tables right outside our classroom door, and that allowed them to have a place to sit and do their paperwork. So out of a thirty-minute conference, we probably spent about ten minutes together, and we would be chatting and more or less kind of telling them, this is our door, this is where you line up, this is kind of the nuts and bolts of third grade, you know, are there any questions? Is there anything you want to, you know, talk about? Is there anything that you have concerns about? And then after that time, then the parents would have a seat, and we would just take the child just inside the classroom door. Most of us left our doors open, and we would sit at the back, and we would just do the ERLA test with them. And so those tests can take anywhere from twenty minutes to thirty minutes, depending on, you know, if it's the first time a child's ever been leveled, or if they're changing levels, or, you know, you need a little more information on them.
Okay, thanks for that.
And it was the classroom teachers that were doing all that.
My second question, well, first of all, I was really pleased that you ran one day into the evening to be more accommodating for parents' work schedules, and you had bilinguals there. Your staff is doing an eleven-hour day. How did you do that?
We generally had, we had the meet the teacher, and then we would have a parent orientation night. And so that's kind of been the history of Harriet Bishop. And so we took our parent orientation night was about three hours or so, and we just slid that up, and we increased that day. And that was kind of the exchange that our staff decided to make for that day.
Makes sense, thank you.
Mr. Schlesner?
Were there considerations for our math assessment as well?
So at this time, the ERLA is our one big data point that we're getting in reading that we have that long individual assessment for. But right now, we're doing NWEA testing for our students to get that math data right at the beginning of the year as well. So right now, this, our focus was on the reading component, so.
And we also were a little concerned that we didn't want to bring the children in and said, you know, reading now, math now. And it's nice to know you, but we got all your assessments the other way. So we wanted to make sure that we just kind of chose the one that really took the time, and that was that ERLA piece. And then have that extra time available for parents and the... And then have that extra time available for parents and being able to meet their needs.
One of the things that really struck me was when you said that the parents made it work in terms of managing to get their students there, however. And so you're to be really, really commended for communicating the importance of this and your enthusiasm, so that parents wanted to make it work. And I think that really speaks highly of your staff and your PTSA and your administration for getting that done.
I think our parents, though, too.
Yes.
I mean, that's one thing I've loved about Bishop, is that it really is a great community, and our parents are engaged and involved, so.
If you want to know, come to Pizza Bingo.
When is it?
We'll get you on the invite list. There's a bunch coming up. October, I think it is the Friday before MEA. Fourteen?
November.
Oh, it's November?
Yeah.
It's a busy place. It is a busy place. There are a lot going on.
Ms. Selinger?
I want to say thank you for the presentation, and I was able to be there that day, kind of filling in at the PTA table, but the thing I noticed is the calm in the building, and having been through any number of meet-the-teacher insanity days, it just was, you know, things just were running so smoothly, and just the ability to chat with people, and I think was really important, and I kind of noticed the tenor of that. So I was really thrilled to hear that you had had good results, and I'll keep my fingers crossed for replication. Thank you.
One of the things I would say was that with our staff and our parents as well, that staff to flex their hours a little bit. So we did have some of our pairs that volunteered to come in for the late shift on that first day, so that we could make sure we covered that full-time. And they still had their number of hours that day, they just moved up and down a little bit. And our secretary did a phenomenal job, and she flexed her hours a little bit with us as well, and came in to help in that first week of August to get us up and running and get everything into Skyward and make sure that the parents could get their conferences in on time.
I guess I'll respond as far as the potential district expansion. It's something that we'll have to look into. If there's interest on the board to support something like that, we will probably survey the parents of all the other schools and see if they're receptive to something like this. And then look at all the potential issues that, you know, SAC was mentioned. Now, when you have all the elementaries on this type of schedule, there's not enough daycare providers in the city of Rochester to handle all of that, so that's something we'll have to have a conversation about. But we can start having that dialogue with the building principals, and we are in the process of purchasing a engagement tool that we'll be able to use at the district level, but even at the site level, they'll be able to engage their parents, and this will be a good topic for them to engage and get their input on interest in trying this as well. But I guess, you know, we're obviously not going to vote on this, but if there's semi-consensus that we should continue pursuing this across the district, we can do what we have to do to do that, and then bring that back at a later date.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was wonderful. Three point oh three, October first, 2017, enrollment update. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at the same, I'm going to call Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, to give us our official student count.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to give you the update. I actually wasn't planning to.
Yeah. We got it.
So, let me find that number for you. We are at seventeen thousand nine hundred thirty-two students as of yesterday. Our budget was built on seventeen thousand eight eighty-six, so we've got forty-six students more than what we had been planning on. So we will work that into our first quarter projections when we bring that to you in December. Thanks.
Three point oh four, October fifth, Professional Development Day. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, just an update. If you recall, October first, we turned into a full Professional Development Day, and that's coming up on Thursday, October fifth. The schedule is from eight to ten forty-five. Will be district-wide professional development opportunities, very similar to what we did back to school week. We have seventy different sessions that staff can sign up for. Some of them are the same ones that were during back-to-school week, so those that didn't have an opportunity to take it at that time could take a session in October. Lunch will be on their own, and then starting back up at twelve fifteen is professional development at the site level. So they'll have, each building will have a different professional development in the afternoon. We will have some staff that, I think we shared with you, that the envoy training and the cultural responsive classroom training with Dr. Holly is something that by the end of the school year, we are going to have all of our instructional staff trained. So there will be some staff that will be required to do envoy training on October fifth for the entire day, and some of those that were not able to do the elementary, do the math instruction, I guess it's not elementary, all the teachers. And back to school week, we'll do it on October fifth.
Three point oh five, Construct Tomorrow, October thirteenth, 2017. Mr. Munoz.
Yeah, we're really excited about this opportunity and looking forward to it. It's a partnership with the Southeast Minnesota Builders and Construction Trades Council, and they are going to be at Century on Friday, October thirteenth. And they'll be, this is for tenth through twelfth grade students. Students will have an opportunity to have a hands-on exploration of careers in the construction and engineering field. There'll be three sessions, one eight to ten, ten fifteen to twelve fifteen, and twelve thirty to two thirty, so students can participate and learn about the different careers that are available in those areas and really get some hands-on experiences in those. So we're really looking forward to that.
Question, Mr. Barlow.
Yes, I was just curious, is there any correlation between Construct Tomorrow and, I should say, interface with C-Tech Pathway Construction and Engineering?
I do know the individuals that are providing the training were part, have been part of our team in developing the programs that are at C-Tech, but it's open to all students, it's not just C-Tech students. But a lot of the individuals that kind of helped us develop those pathways will be doing some of the same work on that day.
Is it just Century High School students or all students?
No, it's all students.
Good event.
Was there any discussion of doing something like this with the Rochester Chamber of Commerce like you do at their STEAM Summit in November?
This is just some, I don't know, Janie, if you want to come up and talk a little bit about how this got started, and, but that might be a way for us to potentially expand it in the future.
Yeah, I can share that this just so happens to be the first round of what we're doing. This is something that has been done in the past, except for it has typically been out in one of the community sites. So this year, we decided to move it onto campus, so it will be held at Century. In terms of our construction pathway, those teachers are taking their students, so yes, they will be completely involved, and they've also, as Superintendent Munoz said, they've been involved in the planning of it. And so both construction and engineering. So yes, we have done this, yes, we have students participating in the STEAM Summit, and yes, we do have interest in expanding this and offering it in other career pathways.
It just seems like the Chamber of Commerce would be very interested in this as well.
And we have been in the works, so yes, we've got some things in the works.
Does anybody else have any questions? Three point oh six, Walk to School Day. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, on Wednesday, October fourth, is the National Walk to School Day. Hundreds of schools and thousands of Minnesota students will, and parents and community members will walk or bike to school to celebrate Walk to School Day. Walk to School Day provides students and families the opportunity to reconnect with the simple joys of walking to school while reaping the benefits of the increased physical activity and reduce the traffic congestion and arriving at school ready to learn. So many of the elementaries are planning this. I think the one that we're highlighting on our website is at Falwell Elementary, and they have a variety of different people coming. I think Slider is going to be there, and some other celebrities will be there to walk with kids. They are going to, Falwell is going to have a group of kids start here at the Edison Building and walk from here to the school. So that's something a little special. But I do know all of the elementaries have different things going on to recognize this Walk to School Day.
So our secondary students don't participate in this?
Well, they, in the past, some of the high school kids have come and participated with the elementary kids, yeah.
Good to know. Three point oh seven, RPS-RPD Community Meeting, October fourth, 2017.
Just a reminder, this has been published in multiple media, paper, and TV, and radio. We are hosting this event for the police department. It is something that they are doing, and we felt it would be easier to have it in one of our sites. Families are more, are comfortable coming to our location, so we will be hosting this event, and this is, has to do with the pending criminal matter that involved a former employee. So the families can come and ask questions of the police department, and my understanding that the police department is going to also provide some guidance for parents on how they can talk to kids about this particular subject matter. It is not a district event, it's not, we're not going to be upfront, taking questions and answers. We're just basically being a host for the police department. And that is tomorrow night, starting at five o'clock here in the boardroom.
Three point oh eight, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Board members. Mr. Schlesner.
Once again, I'd just like to do a shout-out to the Public School Foundation for their Boo Fest event coming up in support of the Public School District. It's on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from ten AM to three PM at Century High School. Come out, have fun, hopefully not get too scared, and help support the foundation so they can help support the students and staff of Rochester Public Schools.
Any other committee reports? Ms. Selinger.
Last night, the Rochester Area Council PTSA met for the first time. Good meeting among some of our local unit leaders, but we also had a great presentation from Ms. Janie Gibson from Curriculum and Instruction, who talked about the math articulation and asked us about how, what kind of math learners we were. I found it actually quite fascinating, the, what has gone on in the district about talking about math and how math is being taught. And Ms. Gibson graciously extended an offer to any of our PTA units to come and speak to them individually at their building sites, which I thought was great. So we appreciated her being there, and the PTSA is alive and well and serving students of families in Rochester.
Okay, I have two things. In front of you, board members, is the School Board Academy sheet. This is from quite a few years ago. It's not something that I am proposing that we do in this format, but just to give you an idea of what has been done in the past. I know that if, running it through community education is probably our best vehicle for running this, and the information's going to need to be into community pretty soon, so I'd like to be able to have a brief discussion on the format in terms of two things, topics covered, and whether we want to have it in this kind of format over six weeks, or if we would rather have one three-hour shot, or, you know, any other ideas. So if we could maybe briefly take a look at that, that would be great.
Right now?
Yes, right now, right now. I've got a captive audience right now.
Ms. Selinger.
Okay. Well, I will weigh in as someone who participated in School Board Academy on two different cycles. The first time I did the, what I believe this is referring to, the six different kind of standalone sessions, I thought that was a great opportunity because you could kind of pick and choose, even if you weren't interested in running for the school board necessarily, you could come and hear about a certain topic. So I thought that was a great way. I also thought that the, see, these were two hours. It seems like when we, the other time we did it, I think was in shorter, lesser times, but longer chunks, if I remember, and I believe Ms. Becker was there, and Mr. Barlow, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, they're all denying it now, but that's okay. That seemed a little...
I was at one of them, I don't remember. I think it was a six-week one, but I don't remember.
I think the shorter, more compacted time, from my opinion, was a little bit more difficult. I liked kind of just the topical ones, but that was me. And I don't necessarily know that we have to have six, but.
Exactly. Ms. Marvin?
My question about this is whether our goal is to try to give people who are considering running for school board, and by the way, I think the timing is great, doing it soon because people will be filing that next spring, giving them an idea about what school board does, what the responsibilities are, just sort of a basic overview of that. And I think if we were going to do that, we could have a two- or three-hour session and be done with it. Just, this is sort of what it involves. These are the kinds of issues you'll be facing, these are the kinds of challenges, and the kinds of things you'll need to know, but not do all the education at that point, because as we know, if people are elected to school board, they have to have additional training. So do we want to give people just an overview of that as they consider running, or do we want to have for the community a broader idea, a deeper idea about what school boards do and what the school district is involved in? I think this is a great format if we're looking at sort of educating community members who are interested, to get a deeper kind of education, but I think it's kind of overkill if people are just trying to decide if they want to run or not.
So we have, okay, Mr. Barlow, go.
Yes, I share Director Marvin's point of perhaps catering it more so for those who are considering running for the school board versus simply informing members of the community who are interested in what the school board does, or the district does, and how it does it. Because I think it's always, there have been many things I've learned after being elected that I maybe wish I would have known in advance of.
My next question, you're up next.
But to the point Director Marvin also makes, upon being elected, we're required, interesting enough, we all know that school board elected officials are the only ones required by state law to actually undergo training. And so I think that should, that's what we should really look toward and lean on for training, and then maybe focus on the preparation aspect of potential candidates considering running.
Mr. Schlesner.
Well, I had gone to a school board academy many years ago under Superintendent Donald Martin, which was shorter and pretty much to the point. I actually thought that format was very useful. I guess for myself, I've been involved with the school district long enough where I had a really good feel for what the school board does anyhow, but not everybody necessarily does that in the community. But I do think a shorter format of here's the key essentials would be a good format versus the more in-depth.
So by shorter format, do you mean like just one evening's worth, or do you mean shorter?
What we had was one evening, probably two or three hours. The attendance was a dozen folks.
Ms. Becker.
I think I like that idea too, and I like breaking it down between, you know, is it for people who are actually looking to run, or is it just for the general public and, you know, what, you know, what does the school board do, you know, how, you know? So I think breaking it down between those two, those two groups, I think is a good I think if we do have, you know, just have a short, a shorter meeting just for candidates, I think we also could talk a little bit about the campaigning process, too. I mean, it's just, you know, not a lot, but just, I mean, people, just so people know... know that it's, you know, that there's, there's more, you know, sometimes there's more to it than just putting your name on the, you know, paying your $2 and writing your name. You know, I mean, there's, and maybe, you know, maybe all of us, if we can remember back to, you know, what our campaigns cost. I mean, you can just say, you know, all of us have been elected, you know, some of us spent this, some of us spent this. And so, you know, you just, I mean, just to, to give people a really good idea of, of, yeah, of what they're getting into.
Ms. Marvin.
Another question, too, that if this is a School Board Academy, my assumption is that it will be run then by School Board members. You know, we've got this incredible cabinet and staff here, but I kind of hate to volunteer them to do one more thing. And I think this would be the kind of thing that if the School Board thinks it should be done, and I think it should be done, then we should also take the ownership and volunteer the time to get this together and to conduct it.
Would you consider, I mean, is this the kind of thing that we would want to consider having any of our cabinet members come and speak briefly? Because I think we've tech, we've done that, we've done that in the past, like when we've had School Finance 101 for, but I don't remember exactly when it occurred.
Yeah, we, and I appreciate your comments, because that's the only concern I would have, that the commitment from the cabinet to come. And then, we've always done, those that are elected, we do a review of all of our departments and everything we do. And I would hate to have them have to do that and then turn around and have to do it again for those that were elected. Not that we'd probably have to go in as much depth as we did the first time, but it's still a time commitment on their part.
Well, and we might be able to, they might be able to give us some, some talking points if we offer them a cup of coffee or something that doesn't cost more than $5, just so that we can be prepared with, with some answers and come up.
Mr. Carlson does better with snickerdoodles, I understand, but coffee would probably be maybe not.
Well, and maybe we could think about that, you know, if we're here actually talking about what School Board members do, maybe we could just do it ourselves, because, you know, we're the ones who are the School Board members. And we can say, you know, the cabinet are always wonderful resources, and, you know, when you have these types of questions, you know, this is, so, you know, these are the people who you want to go to. But, I mean, if we're really trying to inform people what School Board members do, it's like, well, it's us. So.
It's usually more than just a couple meetings a month, and people get to watch us on TV or live. There's a lot more behind it.
So, are you looking tonight from us, a one or the other, or to proceed with, on your behalf, to come back and offer to us a suggested plan, or what were you actually looking for?
I would like to get it done, taken care of tonight, so I can let Amy know, and then we can get it on her calendar. So, we don't have to have necessarily all the details of what we're going to be doing at this particular event, because I'm not, it needs to be into the community education brochure sometime in the next couple of weeks, okay? Put the pressure on. But we don't actually have to plan exactly how we're going to do it, because we won't be doing it until, I don't know, February, March, April, somewhere in there. So.
I would recommend, then, for discussion, having a two-hour session, a one-time, two-hour session run by School Board members focused on those people who are considering running for School Board.
Second, add your thoughts.
Is that a motion?
You can't vote.
We can't.
That was my suggestion.
But you can get a general consensus that that's.
Two hours? Do you think that seems like a good time? We can let everybody know what we do in two hours. Okay.
To talk really fast.
Okay.
Update.
I've got one more thing. Okay, the other, the other item I had regarding the School Board, we've talked about this fairly recently, is having School Board listening posts, which personally, I would very much like to, to be doing. We have the wonderful listening posts that the Superintendent has, but sometimes I think the community actually likes to speak with its elected officials in an informal location. So, in the past, they have had four sessions on one day, you know, early morning, mid-morning, early afternoon, and evening. We can't have more than three School Board members at any one session, because even though it is a public meeting, I think it's much better to not have a quorum so that people really understand we are not voting on anything, we are not meeting as a School Board to discuss necessarily issues that are going to be coming up on the agenda on which we might vote. So, not looking for everybody to participate in four sessions on one day. That's one possibility. Another possibility would be to spread some sessions throughout the year, maybe rather than having them all in one day, or having a couple of one-day sessions throughout the year. So, that would be the possibilities for the format. And, yes.
I do think very times and dates would be best. I think it'd be really good, though. Very supportive of that.
Of which?
Of very times and dates, and having the School Boards listening sessions.
Okay. So, not all in one day?
Correct.
Okay. So, and we don't have to decide dates and everything else. Right now, I can work with Wendy on setting some of that up, and then I will be looking, asking for some volunteers, or whatever. Yep.
And if I may, I'm thinking, would it not be reasonable to expect the Board members who are already appointed to serve on the community engagement to probably be among those who participate consistently on these listening sessions?
Right. If, I mean, there's, there are three of you, so if you're volunteering everybody, the other two members of your committee to be doing all of these, Don, I think maybe you might want to have a conversation with them about it. But if one, if one of the committee could be there, certainly, I think that would, would be helpful. I don't think we need to tie up all three of you unless you want to be doing that. So, okay, great. Okay, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I just, as I informed you in my weekly update, I was in Chicago Thursday and Friday for the PBAS National Conference. And it's the first time I've gone to a PBAS conference, and was really impressed with the variety of breakout sessions. And they had, what really caught my attention, and I attended all of these, is they were more in the world of equity. And some of the things that the presenters were talking about was very reassuring to what we're doing here, and some of the things that they were suggesting and doing exactly what we did as far as the rewriting of the handbook and the things that we've done in there. And then, another interesting thing that really kind of hit home, one of the presenters shared some research done, and I apologize, I don't remember where the research was done exactly right off the top of my head, but, but they had a slide up there that said, you know, punishment, punishment does not change behavior. And they had research that backed that up. They said, teaching and reteaching changes student behavior, not punishment. And it was kind of, it's a whole new, different mindset on how you look at how you deal with kids that misbehave. And I want to, at a future leadership meeting, we'll probably, I'll share that research that was done, and have some conversation with leadership about that. But, no, it really, really kind of resonated with me and made sense that maybe, and that's kind of what PBAS is all about, is teaching and reteaching behavior expectations, and not so much coming down with a big hammer. But it was a great, great conference, and I learned a lot. Hopefully, they learned a lot, too, because they, they oversold their, they had more people than they really had room for. I mean, the keynotes, I had to sit on the floor on the keynote, and then a couple of the sessions, if you didn't get there early, you were on, you had to sit on the floor, because the chairs were all taken. But that, you know, they were all, I mean, this is probably one of the first conferences I've gone to that every session I went to, I thought was valuable and didn't fill the desire to want, oh, I wish I would have sat in the back so I could slip out. They were all really good, good sessions, and it was just really good information. I'm glad that I, and we had several district staff attend, and I know John Marshall, and I think some of the other schools had some staff that attended as well, but it was a really good conference.
Anything else? Moving on to the consent agenda, this is an action item. Are there any items Board members would like forced to remove for separate consideration?
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.01, District Facilities Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Schedule. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Facilities, and I think Andrew's going to join him, the Coordinator of Facility Services. One of the things that I asked them to do is to really start looking long-term on developing a plan for replacing the equipment and vehicles that our operational people use. So, tonight, they're going to share that with you, and have you have a better understanding on how we are planning out for the next several years for equipment replacement.
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With this information item, our intent here is to give the Board an overview of the inventory that we have in the Grounds and Trucking Division, which Andrew runs. This is Andrew Sirick, and he's the Coordinator of Facilities. He's also in charge of, in addition to the Grounds and Trucking, he's also in charge of the HVAC unit and the Carpentry unit. So, all those four entities are represented in that spreadsheet that was provided to you as an attachment. What's not represented in that attachment, however, is custodial equipment, which in its own right can be fairly expensive as well. The Coordinator of Maintenance Services, Jerry Ernst, will be tasked with drawing up that inventory and reviewing that as well. But for now, this is mainly for the aspect of the high-dollar amounts of the equipment that Andrew is in charge in, in charge of. So, we have a PowerPoint that Andrew created, and Andrew also created the 25-year replacement schedule as well, crunched all the numbers. And we're going to go through the PowerPoint with you. I think it's important that you have an overview of exactly what Grounds and Trucking represents here. And like I said, they're responsible for a lot of the mowing, the snow removal. The Trucking Division delivers items throughout the day, the removal of the refuse, a lot of preparation of all the athletic fields, the painting of the lines, the ball fields, all that kind of stuff. And our carpenters and our HVAC division staff also service all 33 district sites as well, working out of FSC with their equipment. And it provides you an overview of all the different tasks. Feel free to pop in whatever you wish to.
Sure. Thank you. As Mr. Munoz said to start us off here, we were asked to create a 25-year plan that would kind of align and aid us in replacing our aging fleet of equipment that's used by our ground staff, which is a staff of seven, and our trucking staff, which is a staff of five FTEs. Some highlights of these two departments, our distribution of about two and a half semi-loads of food every week from our FSC facilities building out to the various elementary and high schools, middle schools. Also, on a daily basis, we deliver mail, food, furniture, many curriculum items to all those sites. In the peak of summer mowing season, with all the athletic fields, we're mowing approximately 150 acres a week. Snow removal adds up to about 100 acres of snow removal. That's removed from parking lots, sidewalks, playgrounds, on a per snowfall basis. On a monthly basis, we're looking at about 120 tons of refuse from all of our sites, and also approximately 22 tons worth of recyclables that's removed. And on to our athletic fields, we paint out about 3,000 gallons of striping for all the various sports that are played outside. So, as we move through, when equipment is needed for replacement, we always evaluate that to see if it is actually at its end of its lifestyle, or if better replacements are available. So, over the past three years, looking at that equipment that we do have, we have reduced our inventory by a number of items. One example of that is a Toolcat snow removal machine that we use primarily on sidewalks, public city sidewalks. We were able to do some route adjustments with that, and also move some of those responsibilities onto sites that have snow removal tractors at them already to reduce that piece of equipment and shift those responsibilities around a little bit.
And just for reference sake, that Toolcat is a really expensive piece of equipment.
That's about a $60,000 piece of equipment with a snow blower, a broom, and a blade that we have with it. So, all in total, kind of at a broad overview, we inventory about 200 pieces of equipment in facilities. Most of it is used by our Facilities Department, and most of it is at FSC Supporting Grounds and Trucking. It's hard to predict. Obviously, we're our Facilities Department, and all of our facilities will be in 25 years, but we did come up with this plan, and we've kind of identified five larger pieces of equipment that we're going to be needing to probably add to that inventory as well over the next 10 years. Then, there's just a little bit of a breakdown. So, some of those pieces of equipment are small, under $3,000 weed eaters, leaf blowers type of equipment, and a lot of trucks, vehicles in the mid-range there, lawn mowers. And then, we do have a number of large, over $100,000 pieces of equipment, some of our large wide-area mowers, front-end loaders for snow removal, and the refuse vehicles.
What prompted some of the increase that we're going to propose is, you know, we added Mighty Oaks, which is a full-time site now. The addition of Hoover adds its own little element. There's more parking lot there, more requirements, and any potential future buildings. And if you notice on the attachment, this isn't adding five pieces next year. This is over a considerable amount of time, all the way from 17 through 24. So, it's spaced out. And then, the annual allotment at the end of that, he tried to balance out, so it's not a huge hit in one year, and then nothing the next. We're trying to balance it out over those 25 years. So, you get a real good overview of what we're going to be asking for in the, for the next 25 years, or he'll be asking for the next 25 years.
You all will be here.
No, we're having that academy thing.
So, moving forward, our plan is to kind of use this schedule for our replacement schedule, but also as these pieces of equipment come up, it's not automatically going to be purchased just because it's on the schedule. We'll be taking a look at that piece of equipment, determine if it got the amount of use that we think it did over the next number of years during the lifespan of that, determine if it's actually wore out and is at the end of its useful life. And then, when we do determine a piece of equipment is worn out, truly needs to be replaced, we will have to assess that piece of equipment, whether or not something new is out there on the market that can replace it better, do the job more efficiently. Maybe a newer piece of equipment can do the job of two older ones. There's always new stuff coming out in the equipment market, bigger and better. And then, any questions?
Board Members? Ms. Becker.
So, along with your assessment of the individual piece of equipment, you're also going to assess, is it still, is it still the best way to do the job, having the district do it, as opposed to having, having another entity do it?
We are way ahead of you on that one, yes. Because we anticipated that you would be asking that, and we've already started our research on that. Kind of, well, there's two pieces to this, I think, is, I'm not trying to speak for you, but I think there's two pieces. One is the snow removal piece, potentially, and then the other might potentially be the refuse truck.
Because those are pretty big-ticket items.
They are, absolutely. The interesting piece about that is, I believe you, we have the information from several years ago when the refuse issue came up. That's outdated, of course. And so, an interesting piece of that is a local provider actually came to us recently and wanted to present or give us a rough ballpark as far as what that particular company would estimate it would cost for us to hire them as a private contractor to come and do our refuse. And Andrew's been working with that provider. And if we get to the point where we're going to ask, if we ask for a refuse truck, once we discuss all this at Cabinet, and we provide this information, and we make the decision we want to bring it forward, then we'll show you all those numbers. We want to be fair to those, that contractor, not identify them, or provide numbers today, because it's a real rough estimate. But we still have to analyze it and determine whether or not, what's the best cost-benefit analysis as far as what's best for the district on the refuse piece. We also did some preliminary work. We also did some preliminary work with the snow removal piece and Andrew has done a really fantastic job on both of these issues. I'll let you explain the snow removal piece that you...
Front-end loaders or...
Well...
So front-end loaders, I did a little bit of a cost analysis on those and our pricing as a government entity from both John Deere and Caterpillar, providers of heavy equipment like that, is tremendously under book price for private contractors to buy. Right now, Caterpillar is 43% off book price and so we're able to get very good pricing on that type of equipment. So looking at a replacement schedule of about a seven-year payback is looking like our best payback for that type of equipment. When we were able to replace it, retain a very, very good trade-in value on that equipment, keep a modern fleet, and not risk the breakdowns that come with older equipment. If I extended that out, figuring in repairs and maintenance that would need to be done on that type of equipment, figured we had to get to about a 30-year-old piece of equipment where we started saving money by keeping it for the long term over the seven years.
Mr. Becker?
I'm sorry.
Yes. I know oftentimes when we're talking facilities, you oftentimes will reference what funding source it comes from. And so I'm curious, in terms of be it a front-end loader, what's the funding source through these type of equipment items?
It's a capital item, so it's out of the capital funds, the general fund.
We have some capital funds allocated to maintenance and facilities. A front-end loader would exhaust those, so we'd be using some general fund money.
Yes.
That's allocated towards our maintenance department for equipment replacement, supplies, and repairs.
And I think, with two of the new board members probably were at the table when we had that discussion a few, my first year here, I think it was. We generate a little over $30,000 from the, I think it's the county, because we move, we haul their refuse. So we, what's in the budget is they save that and I think it's even line item, refuse truck line item, but it's, we do generate some money because we were able to haul for somebody else as well. So that, that's a fund that they could have access to, to purchase equipment as well.
Certainly. Just an update on that number a little bit is running those figures again in our current costs with the current truck and everything and our current tipping fees. I'm figuring that we're profiting above getting rid of the county's refuse, about $9,000 a year. So there, we do take in a deal more money, but part of that is used to maintain the truck, the percentage that the county uses, and then also the tipping fees at the waste energy facility.
I don't want to get into this. I don't want to get into this right now, but I do think there's a, there is a, there is a way to do this. There's an answer to, I mean, the question is, do we provide the service for ourselves or do we buy it? And what's, and what's entailed in buying it or, you know, buying the service and what is it, to do the service ourselves?
I'm satisfied with the answer, however that comes out, as long as we do a full, complete, and proper analysis of those costs. If it falls that it's best for the district to do that, then that's what we should do. But if somebody else can do it cheaper than what we can do it and satisfy the needs of the district, then we should give serious consideration to doing that. So all I ask is that when we make these considerations, that we factor, factor in that. Because we did that the last time. We asked people to submit proposals and, but we made them say, "You will do it this time, you will do..." We told them exactly how they were going to do it. I don't think we, if we're going to do analysis, we'd ask, they're the proposed professionals. We may, we may have hours where they can and can't do stuff, we need to do that, but I think you've got to give them the ability to tell us how they would do that and what the terms of that is and what the cost. We can wrestle with the decision whether or not that makes sense if they have to, but as long as we're going to approach it that way, then I'm happy with the answer either way.
I think in the interest of time and your time and having to listen to us debate this issue again tonight...
I object to that, actually. I object to that.
Do you?
Yeah, I object to that. I think we're having a discussion about how we're proceeding and I think it's, I think it's proper that we have that discussion. I feel like you're trying to, you're trying to shorten. I was done with what I was saying, but I'm offended by the fact that you, you don't want to discuss it. It's something that's relevant, policy topic for this board to discuss.
Well, it's an information item on their behalf tonight and you will be bringing it to us at some point with all the information that you have collected, your research and your recommendation. And I think that would probably be, that will be an excellent time for us to discuss it because we will have a whole lot more information than we do at this point. That's all.
I can assure you that we've heard you and we are going, we do have a plan in place as far as doing that and we've heard you over the years and we were...
Appreciate that.
We're going to have everything in place. We aren't going to, it's going to come and request something that we don't think we could support. And it's going to be Cabinet that's going to make the decision and ultimately the superintendent to decide whether we bring it forward or not. And then when we have that support, then we'll bring it forward. But I'm not going to bring something forward that's incomplete or not fully researched. And the same goes for the snow removal piece as well.
That's all I ask.
As, the snow removal piece is more, has more nuances because when you ask for costs, they usually have a snow amount limit, you know, like four inches is where they will price for you. But we remove snow, even the minor little amounts, and so we're, we still may have to retain some equipment and personnel to do the smaller amounts if we're going to continue to do that versus hiring, hiring a private contractor to come and do those four inches and above or whatever level they may set as far as what they offer to us. So we're looking at it all and that's why we started the conversation today, to, to give you the information that we did have here and to give you a chance to review it and let you know that we're working on it.
Well, I appreciate, I'm not sure many districts plan out 25 years of equipment use, so I think that's, that's quite impressive that we're really looking long-term and I agree, I think what I can say about the group is that they will bring back something that's in best interest of the district and, but I appreciate, because I know it was a lot of work, Andrew, to, to do this and to map it out for 25 years, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more comment.
Yes, Ms. Becker.
I do appreciate the fact that you guys are really looking into this and, because I think there, early on, I think there were, you know, some hard feelings and I really do appreciate the fact that you guys are really taking a really serious look in this and, and looking out for the district and the taxpayers and, and how we're spending our money. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as another side note on that, unfortunately, it might come sooner than later because we're having a significant issue with one of those items that we're going to have to make a decision on and so it might be coming in the next couple of weeks if we can get all the information together. Because we have to make some decisions about repair versus replace or privatize, so just being upfront with you.
I, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
It's been six years, so...
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. 7.02 Insurance Premium, premiums for Independent School District 535 Self-Insurance Trust Fund. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carles, Executive Director of Finance, will provide this information for us tonight.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Munoz. I am prepared for this item and thank you for letting me present it to you. I was originally planning to just get up here and say premiums are going up, what's new, and then walk away, but then I thought, I think I owe a little bit more explanation this year and so I wanted to quickly provide what's happening. So our insurance trust was established in 1983. The school district became self-insured at that point and ever since then, the trustees who are a district employee representative, currently that's Emily Lynch, she is one of our teachers, a superintendent's designee, that's myself, a school board representative, that's Gary Smith, and then two community members serve as trustees. And we get together twice a year, we review the data on the health and dental plans and what we're charged with doing is making sure that the fund stays solvent. So we need to adjust rates and change those as necessary, when necessary, so that the fund remains viable. So what's happening in the health world? So far this year, our claims have been 101% of projection, meaning they're just slightly above what the actuaries had projected they would be. That's not a huge concern because there is a fund balance in the health insurance trust to absorb a little bit of overage there. But traditionally, we've been running more in that 95% to 98% at any given time. So this is a little bit unusual that we are just over 100% this year. We have 2,298 employees with coverage. I noted there that 46% of them are on the traditional co-pay or I call it the low deductible plan. 54% of employees now have migrated to the high deductible plan. If you think about it, the high deductible plan just came about like four school years ago and at that point, there was 90% of the people on the low deductible, 10% on the high deductible. But due to costs of the monthly premiums, people have been switching over to the high deductible plan. There is also a second committee that gets together. These are not the trustees, these are separate individuals. There's one from each bargaining group present. They meet twice a year and they look at ways the plan could change benefits to potentially lower costs. And if the costs are lower, then the premiums don't have to go up as much. When they met this summer, they agreed to only one change and that was making some small tweaks to the co-pays for the prescription drugs. That has been an area of the plan that's been increasing double-digit percentages over the last few years, so there are going to be increases to those co-pays. We could not get consensus on raising deductibles or out-of-pocket maximums, which would have helped keep the increase lower. So the actuaries are projecting an 8% increase in medical costs next year and a 12% increase for pharmacy costs. When you sort it all out and you look at the numbers of people we have and you take into consideration what I just said, the premiums need to go up 7% for the fund to stay fully funded next year. Employees unfortunately are going to cover most, all of this increase out of their paychecks. Because of how the contracts are written and how they've been bargained, most of the premiums are now higher than the district cap on the monthly payments that the district will make, so the employees are going to shoulder these increases. So I just wanted to put that out there so we could just kind of eyeball it and see what that means. So this is looking at the low deductible plan, so the, kind of the older, the more traditional plan. A teacher is currently paying $58 a month if they choose single coverage. Next year, it's going to go to $115 a month, so that's an increase of $57 a month. For our non-teachers, they're paying $97 a month today, it's going to go to $154. Again, increase of 57, they have to pay it all out of their paycheck. For teacher-family coverage, it's going up $116 and for non-teacher family coverage is also going up $116. And you can tend to see the monthly costs there now for a non-teacher family, $544.80 out of their pocket. And that's not the whole story. I flip over one more. This is what the employer is contributing to those plans. So what I just said, $544 for a non-teacher family, the district's also paying $1,225.20. So we've, we've got a health insurance premium that's over $1,700 a month, significant cost to have an employee benefit for health insurance. As you can see, on the low deductible plan, all the caps have been met, there's no change to the district, continue contributing the same amounts. On the high deductible plan, the teachers with single coverage are not going to experience a change. This is the only one area where there's not going to be a change. On the non-teacher group, there's going to be an increase of $7 a month. So what was free for single coverage is now going to cost $7 a month on the paycheck. And on the family coverage, both teachers and non-teachers are going up $95 a month. So you can kind of start to see why people have been migrating to the high deductible plan because instead of paying $544 a month for a non-teacher, you could be paying $232 a month. Again, you get less coverage because you have to cover more out-of-pocket, but you pay less in your paycheck as you go. And again, on the district side, this is the one area where the district's going to have to increase their contribution for teachers on the single plan, $47 a month and non-teachers, $40 a month. Those caps have not quite been met as of yet. Dental, same thing. We were running just a little bit high on our costs, 104%. We have 2,608 employees carrying coverage and projecting another 4% increase in dental costs in 2018. We put those together, the actuary said you need to raise your cost 9% next year. The district will be covering all of this cost because our contracts are written that employees get free, single, or family coverage. So how do we go forward from here? There's two areas we're going to be working on right away here over the next few months. We're going to build a third health plan option for 2019. It's going to have a higher deductible and it will likely be a health savings account-eligible type of plan. What we have right now only works with a health reimbursement account. The benefit of a health savings account is employees can also put some of their own money into that and they can take a tax deduction for that. So we'd like to roll out that plan for 2019. Right now, we only have the single coverage pricing or family coverage pricing. There's three or four different ways we could go with that. We could do employee plus spouse, so that'd be single plus who you're married to, or you could go single plus your children only and assume maybe your spouse is getting coverage out of another employer and then we'd have the family. We also could just do employee plus one, so that plus one could be their spouse or one of their children. And so when you do that, that would change the pricing, would lower the cost for singles. The employee plus one wouldn't be as bad, but the family cost then unfortunately goes up. So we would need to look at how much is the district willing to adjust what they're paying in those scenarios. I just wanted to put out there that we need to work through these issues with our bargaining groups as their contracts are open for negotiations because the language in most of our contracts would not accommodate this. We could develop it, we could roll it out there, but I doubt anyone would take the option if we don't have language in the contracts that say, well, how much do they get from the district contribution? That's what I had for you. This was an information item only, this is not something we get to vote on, it's, it kind of is what it is. But I wanted you to also know we are thinking about the future and trying to figure out how do we handle these escalating costs for our employees.
I'd like to ask a quick question. Can you explain to me if this is a bargaining issue as to why there is such a difference between, for example, the teacher single and the non-teacher single? Is that, is that a result of bargaining with those units?
Yes, correct. My recollection of the memory was one rate got set first and then the other group wanted a couple percent higher than that and it kind of jockeyed back and forth and then it got locked in place.
Okay. What happens to employees who aren't in a bargaining unit? How is that determined?
They're taking the non-teacher contribution rate. But that's very foreign. I, in fact, I don't even know if anybody would be not in a group that's getting insurance coverage.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned at 7:20 PM.